...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, good morning, everybody. Good morning, you get to see the better look into, so I'm back here, but we're all here. Uh, we're gonna call a meeting to orders, uh, look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Put, both approved. The minutes from the eleven sixteen meeting?
I have one question on them. At the bottom where it says that after I gave my report, I left, I left because I left to go to attend my Edno meeting, so.
It doesn't matter why you left.
Can you guys hear them?
I can't.
It doesn't matter why you left, you just have to know in the minutes that the person left.
Okay, I've never seen that.
Yeah, I got that.
Over here, listening here and all, everybody.
Rick has been on at different times and.
I've never noticed this.
Couple, just a couple of weeks ago, Rick was calling.
Yeah, I guess.
I've never read the minutes, so I guess that's my question. That's the reason, I guess that's the whole reason.
So, the meeting, you know that, you know that.
You have to, because when you take the vote at the end, everybody adjourns, well, you can't say all ayes, because.
Somebody was gone.
Somebody was gone, yeah.
Okay. Ben, tell us.
I'm just saying, I never saw it in any other minutes, and I was just questioning why it was in there, so.
Okay.
That was my question.
Would you like me to get you a copy of that?
I'm not worried about it, I'm just asked the question as to why it, I never read it in any other minutes, that, uh, it was there, so it kinda struck me that I walked out of here, got on the meeting, and stood there for forty-five minutes, so it wasn't like I was going to a haircut or something, I left to the meeting.
That wasn't the intent for us.
I didn't say it wasn't intent, I just asked the question, Peggy.
Apparently, we know that in the minutes when people leave or what.
Always.
Know that, always.
Okay. So, with that, is there any other questions or additions or fractions to the minutes?
I'd make a motion to take the minutes from the sixteenth, accept them.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, approved. General public concerns. Is there anybody on there, generally public?
Nope.
Nope. Alright, well, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to John, means he's here, and he's probably got a busy schedule. Thank you for stopping, Ken. I guess it's okay for you to stop, 'cause you're here anyway.
Yeah.
You didn't have to zoom from your office.
No, no, I, no, I don't even know if I could set that up from my office.
So, we checked on this, uh, I don't think there's anything from several years back, and I don't know, I have to say that, 'cause I don't know the specific time, but at some point in time, you had asked the board of supervisors if you could help out some transitional work in Hamilton County.
Yeah.
So, and they said yes. But, it's come to our attention, you still are helping them.
Yeah.
So, we just wanted to ask you about that.
Well, the county attorney in Hamilton County just turned seventy-five. He's the longest tenured, oldest county attorney in the state of Iowa. Uh, he has been incredibly nice to me, I'm not sure why, so if he needed help, I told him I would help him out. At the time when I told him I would help him out, he was not planning to run again. He then ran again. And now, I've been waiting for him to retire. My plan was to help him out until he retired, but he hasn't retired. Uh, so that's why. He doesn't have time to train somebody, so he's, he wanted me to help, because the pool of people he can pull from, they're all brand-new attorneys. And what I've done here, since I've been in Humboldt, is I've helped probably too much, but the small towns, the city of Humboldt, Cassous, Wright, Pocahontas, Webster, Calhoun, and Hamilton, with conflicts or whatever, in case I have to. And in turn, I think I spent three cases away. I would like to spend more away, but I can't justify it. So, the plan on this was to help him out until he retired, uh, and my understanding was he was gonna retire at the beginning of two thousand and, was it fourteen? Beginning of two thousand and fourteen. And then he didn't, and then he ran again in two thousand and eighteen. That's why I'm still there.
And that's a four-year deal?
Yeah. But, like I said, he just turned seventy-five, he, I have no idea why he hasn't retired. He could've re, we're trying to figure it out, he can't possibly be making, not getting extra IFRS, he's not, not helping him keep working. So, no, but I expected him to quit, and, uh, he told me he was, so, um.
But, you know, and I think he's kinda touched on something that's a good thing, is the smaller counties, you know, with, uh, helping back and forth, and, uh, you know, it'd be nice if, uh, sometimes if, take your small county around here, that has a county attorney that's gonna be gone on vacation for a week, and maybe the adjoining county.
Right.
The county attorney can say, because of things that will come up in that week, uh, something, uh, do law enforcement more so related, probably than anything.
And I've done that with the Pocahontas County.
Yeah, and, and, and reciprocate back and forth, so that part's good, but the fact that you've been spending, you know, whatever amount of time.
Yeah, my question is, how much time do you spend over there?
One day a week.
One day a week.
So.
So about twenty percent of your time's over there.
Hmm, yeah, but, uh, a lot of times it's a half day, and then I come back here, so I, I doubt it, twenty percent of my time over there.
Okay. But it's a fair percentage, and, you know, didn't bring you or anybody else to talk how much anybody's making, but, you know, you're, you're kind of considered a full-time attorney.
Right.
But you're not, you know, it's not like it's a fifty-fifty, we know that, it's not fifty percent of your time, but it's a percentage of your time.
Right.
When you're considered a full-time attorney in, in Humboldt County.
Right.
So that, that is a bit of a, a problem. I thought, you know, this was a temporary thing that's gone on for eleven, seventeen?
Seventy-six.
Probably.
Seven?
Seventy-six, twenty-fourteen, and probably split. Yeah, 'cause Eric asked me that question, how long has this been going on? I said, eh, I couldn't remember, I said, I guess, I guess about six, seven years, I knew it had to go.
And there's no, we have to tell you, there's no formal agreement, there's no twenty-eighteen year or anything that we're sharing you, which, you know, I don't know if any counties share a county attorney, I hope some do, but.
To share a county attorney, you have to be elected in both counties.
Yeah, I can see that.
To share.
There's an elected position.
To share assistance, that's handled in different ways in different counties, so there are some counties that share assistance, that don't have a twenty-eighteen agreement, they just treat them separately, there's some counties that share assistance that have a twenty-eighteen agreement.
So, I mean, this isn't so much, I would think, as helping out, 'cause I think that's a good thing, the small counties around, and that, you know, hopefully you got a good relationship with other county attorneys, that you can talk back and forth and fill in if needed.
Right, well, yeah.
But this is kind of above and beyond that, John, I mean, we're expecting you here all the time, except, you know, on your days off and what have you.
Right.
Uh, so I'm hoping maybe you could alter that relationship and get back to more of a hundred percent time, you know, 'cause that's, that's the way it's set up, I mean, you're lucky to be a hundred percent full-time county attorney in Humboldt, no other county.
Right, I mean, regardless of what I spend in, in Hamilton, I still easily put in forty or fifty hours a week here.
That's working, uh.
Easily, so, I mean, it, it's all relative, as far as, I understand.
Okay, he can hear, okay.
And, you know, when you look at twenty-eighteen agreements, what, where you can run into some problems there, is if all the money comes from Humboldt, it, my salary's set by the compensation board here, it has to be set by the compensation board, so.
And I don't think the compensation boards were a, a, a gentleman's agreement with Hamilton County.
Yeah, they, let's come up in there, but, you know, the last, like, the last two meetings of the compensation board, one meeting I had throats and pipes, every other meeting I was gone.
Mm-hmm.
So it's been three years since I've seen the compensation board.
Mm-hmm.
But, no, it came up, I think it came up three years ago.
I, I'll probably agree with you, I think I sat in on a board meeting when it got brought up, about the compensation board.
That's probably been three years.
It's been a while, and, it's been a while ago.
And I will, I will point out that when I started here, uh, the compensation board, it, it compares my job to jobs in other counties that have two county attorney assistants, and here it's just me. And the last, I don't know how many times, but I've actually gone in front of the compensation board, told Ash what to say, is I'm paid right in the middle of the counties that are similar in size with one county attorney. So, I'm not complaining about my salary here, or anything like that, I have no idea how much I'm making in Hamilton County, but I can tell you it's not very much. Um, I think it was, I don't know, I worked there in two thousand and five, six, and I don't know, I don't know if it's more or less than that, not much, but, um.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Are, do you have a, like, are you considered like an assistant county attorney over there, or are you just a fill-in?
I'm, because I'm not the county attorney, I'm considered an assistant.
Okay.
So. Hey.
Well, uh, the, our, our concerns is that Humboldt County gets stuff done, you know.
Have you had a problem with me getting stuffed out in the past?
Well, I've had a few times I've asked you questions, and you've never got an answer back.
What questions were those?
Well, the air condenser's still on there, I think I asked you three times, and never got a response. Well, I, I was just, I, I was there, I was there. And all I asked for was a letter from you to the tower company, and we never got it.
That's, um, maybe there's some problems, but we're getting information on that.
But I think the insurance, we finally turned it over to the insurance company, and their attorneys are working on it. But, um, I, I just wanna make sure that stuff and all, and I's getting done.
Well, yeah, you're considered full-time Humboldt County's attorney, and, I mean, we're requesting that you get back to that full-time status, because there's no formal agreement, as we've determined, it's a gentleman's agreement, you know, we'd never, uh, probably, you know, say no to helping the transition, but a seven, eight-year is, is not a transition, it's, it's a, it's a part-time job, and you're not supposed to be part-time someplace else, you're supposed to be full-time in Humboldt County. That's the point. And I won't name any names, but there's been also some concern, and Rick brought up one specific matter, uh, some other things from other county entities other than us, that think that, you know, the county attorney needs to pay closer attention to Humboldt County, and devote the time and effort to things that, that need to be done in our county. And we're concerned that, knowing that you spend somewhat of time in Hamilton, that might be part of the reason why some of their things weren't getting handled as quickly and properly as they should be.
Okay, uh, I guess no one's come to me with any direct complaints, but as far as.
They came to us.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe pass those on, and, um.
Just concerns, not outright complaints, I think Rick gave you a, a.
Now, now, yeah, but that's, that's also, that's also a board that, that I don't represent. Um, and that's what, you know, I spent a lot of time with the emergency management board, trying to help them.
Yeah.
And, uh, we also got outside counsel to help them, they followed none of our advice, and so part of what I've decided is, when the board's not a pure county board, I mean, it doesn't make any sense for me to spend a lot of time. I can't tell you how much time I spent on that stuff, for no one to listen to what I say, no one to listen to the attorneys that we hired to help us, and, and don't wanna do whatever they want, so I'm out of those. And, so the hybrid boards, I'm done with them, because I can help the county, just the county, but on these hybrid boards, people have been asking me for advice, for help, it's not followed, and, I mean, I feel like I wasted all of my time.
Yeah, and I'll just, just explain, and we might have general public listening, hybrid board is basically a board where the county sits on it, law enforcement might sit on it, city mayors sit on it, it's a, you know, it doesn't just Humboldt County, so I'm just.
Oh, yeah, so like the emergency management commission is, that's all the mayors, the sheriff, a supervisor, and, you know, we've had a lot of work on that board since I've been here, and we spent a lot of time before the last one was hired.
Well, I might say, that's fine, that's, thanks, Rick, for the explanation of hybrid boards.
Yeah, well, I just thought, give it to us, let us know.
But, I might look at that too, that it is still a county board.
It's not a county board, though, Eric.
Well, it's in the county.
Just because it's in the county, doesn't mean it's a county board.
I can see your point.
You, you understand, one of my jobs as a county attorney, my statutory duty is to represent the elected officials, right? Not to represent the mayors, not to give the mayors advice, and that got blurred to the point where I'm getting requests from the mayors to help them with problems in their town. To, so.
And that, and that technically is not your job.
No, and, but if you look at how some of these boards are set up, when they're set up with more than you guys, I can give you guys advice, but I am not supposed to give the entire board advice, right? I give the board supervisors advice, I give the treasurer, recorder, whoever asks for it, but I do not give mayors advice, I do not give city managers advice, and it gets to the point where I'm getting contacted by cities to answer all their questions, and they're expecting me to come to nine-one-one board meetings, and they want me to come to their number two management meetings, and they want me to come sit in all these other meetings, and, you know, at some point, that becomes a little bit absurd.
Well, that's fine, 'cause I don't think that's the, the argument here, uh, it's, I think going back to the, you know, I just wanna call it a gentleman's agreement, 'cause there was nothing formal, back county years, to the board supervisors and said, yeah, go get the, you know, Hamilton County through their transition, or whatever they had going on back those years ago, but by the same token, I think we can say, I think I've spent long enough, you know, this isn't a discussion about the fringe boards and the, and the hybrid boards, it's about you being a hundred percent full-time, because, you know, you do have the responsibility with law enforcement, that's obviously a county attorney.
Right.
Job, and to make sure you've got your full time and attention devoted to the things, you know, yeah, those other board things, that, fine, and I don't blame you for a concern with the small town mayors calling you up and, you know, asking for legal advice, but to my knowledge, most of the small towns have their council, whomever that is, and they understand it, and if you have to tell them, fine, but.
I'm cheaper, I'm cheaper, though, yeah.
Yep, but you can always tell them in a nice, kind way, that that isn't maybe your gig, and they need to look elsewhere, but, so that wasn't really the point, I think the point is getting focused back to Humboldt County as a hundred percent county attorney, and, you know, do your best to cease and desist, uh, the time spent in Hamilton County, because that isn't really, I don't believe it's crap. I don't know, that's my opinion, and from what I see and hear and know lately, and you guys are here, and hopefully everybody else can hear on the computer, uh, but, you know, it was a board decision, apparently, many years ago, to say, yeah, go ahead and help them out, I think.
And you're, it, obviously, there's nothing in the minutes, 'cause we, I don't know if you even looked, have you ever even looked, Peggy?
No, but.
Yeah.
I don't think.
I don't think there was a vote or anything like that, I think it was just more of, yeah, go help them out, 'cause we help out surrounding counties, they help us back, but like Eric said, you know, that was six years ago.
I don't think it was intended to, uh.
I don't think the board's intent at that time was to say, oh.
It wasn't, it wasn't mine.
Oh, hey, yeah, I believe, I believed you, John, there, it, you know, it, I mean,
you all don't know Pat, but it, to me, this is, this is helping out my friend who's been, again, out of his way to be kind to me when he never needed to be. So, it's helping him out, but, I mean, again, he's seventy-five, he's the oldest and longest tenured county attorney in Iowa. Um, I, you have to understand, I never expected him to work this long.
Yeah.
I, I expected him to be done, I mean, it wasn't like I got into this, you know, I'm gonna do this for the next twenty years, it's, I got into this knowing the guy's past retirement age, and can go any time, and thinking it was his last term, and it wasn't. I mean, it, you look at two thousand and fourteen, he didn't know he was running when I said I'd help him out, and then he ran, and then he ran again, so, but he's just not somebody that I've ever said no to, not because I feel like I'd be, oh, shoot.
Well, I don't believe that, and, and not, I'm sure he's a wonderful man, you know, longest tenured county attorney, God bless him for his years of service, but he works for Hamilton County, he's elected in Hamilton County, it's Hamilton County's concern, if he needs assistance, then maybe they need to hire an assistant county attorney, or do something to that degree, not be, through your good nature and, and, and helping a longtime friend, I don't think that it's Humboldt County's responsibility to be sharing you any percentage of the time with them.
Yeah, I, I mean, you look, you look at it as a percentage of time, and, and you talk about a full-time Humboldt County attorney, I mean, I was in the sheriff department till about midnight, Saturday night, I mean, it's not like my job here is eight to four, Friday or Friday. My job's always including nights and weekends, and sometimes really early mornings, but, you know, when you talk about the time that I put in, I guess I take issue with you thinking I work like thirty or twenty-four hours a week here, I don't, I'm not close to that, not close. Um, and I get calls, I work on the weekends, I work at night, I mean, it, we have.
Well, typically, that's when you get them calls, it's white, Saturday night.
I mean, I, but, I've always been willing to go in, always been willing to help, I write a ton of search warrants, I edit the search warrants, I don't write, I am, you know, as far as being available for law enforcement and helping law enforcement, um, I am absolutely available for them. Uh, this has been a ridiculous time of work, um, we ask stuff, and we don't, we ask stuff, and then we don't. People are home, people are out with COVID, judges are out with COVID, everybody's even out, um, it's been a ridiculous time, because as far as court-wise, we're getting nothing done. I mean, since March, we're getting nothing done. So, as far as, like, anybody's performance, I mean, part of that's dictated by, what I'm in court, people aren't, and people aren't showing up, whether it's attorneys or defendants, so we're not moving cases along, so we have cases that have now been sitting for eleven months, twelve months, because we either can't find the defendant, or we can't get them done, 'cause we're not having court. So it, you know, I guess, if you think I don't spend time here, and I don't do my job here, I, I take issue with that, but I understand, and I'll see if I can get something worked out, but I, I literally just got called to court.
Oh, go to court, I'll work.
See what you can do on that, and if you would, report back and let us know what you're coming up with.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
If we have to, I'm sure if that's scheduled at nine o'clock, we're held to that time, are we not?
Probably better.
It's not nine o'clock yet, but.
Ben is on there, do you wanna ask him, if you want to, please?
Let's see what Ben.
Ben? Can, can you hear us now?
Ben?
Can you hear us?
Tell me, tell.
Uh, yeah, we're just contemplating that our, uh.
I'm gonna call people.
Well.
This is what your place is.
Yeah, we may, we just.
Well, just go after drainage, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, we'll either send you a message when we're getting towards the end, and we can switch if you're busy doing something else. Okay, yeah, I'll just, I'll, uh, I'll mute me and, uh, shut off video, and, uh, when you guys can just send me a message, that's it, we're getting close.
Okay, we'll do that, Ben. Thank you, thank you.
You wanna do the claims quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, but doesn't matter, they're not going anywhere.
They're not going.
No, the claims is off.
Oh, okay, well, then.
There's no hurry to get them over to someone else, unless you want to get them out of the way.
One thing off of the board.
Yeah, go ahead, Bruce, if you got.
General, I had three, three-one-three, three-four-two, point three-four, and drainage I had sixty-seven, sixty-nine, hundred, even.
Okay.
I was accidentally wrote down the wrong number. Yeah, I did, three-one-three, three-four-two, thirty-four?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I got.
Six-seven, six-nine.
I'll second that.
Okay, did you, do you have anything in drainage?
Six-seven, sixty-nine.
Oh, so you got them both, and you both agreed?
Yeah.
Got a first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, claims are approved. I don't, I don't forget to sign.
I do, I lift the next page over when you think it's the total.
Yeah, you, you're looking the wrong side, you looked up the right-hand side.
Well, I wrote that other one down, too, and then I flipped the next page over there, and, so that's, I think.
I'm not sure where our gentleman is, he's supposed to be here at nine o'clock. Is this Colin here, maybe?
Yeah, I'm on, on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
Not sure which way to turn, huh?
If there.
If you guys, since there's two of you.
Mm-hmm. Now, sign, done, rings, particular, let me choose going to drainage to do our.
I made a motion to move to drainage.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Yep.
We are in drainage. For approval of a preliminary engineering report on BD number seven, sub-two.
I don't know when, Colin, the proper time of this is, but Mike Ludwig called in and said on the Ferguson, uh, Brunson trust, all of the land they own, they don't know. I just didn't wanna forget to tell you that.
And we'll, what is it, was that the only objection you have, or maybe we can go through that later?
There may be some landowners on here now, I don't know, that's the only one I got that called ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you here for the drainage?
Yeah, yeah, just do social distancing with your mask, and.
Good.
So, uh, maybe it's easy to look at him when he's signing. Colin, you, uh, wanna go through your information that you, we have copies up here?
Yeah, yep, and, well, I guess first of all, this is a formal hearing for drainage district seven, sub-two, for, for drainage improvements, and I had brought, uh, preliminary, or I guess the engineer's report to, to you, the board of supervisors, um, a couple months ago, and talked to you about it, and then I did an amendment, which included a preliminary classification, so you got the engineer's report, and then an amendment, I think I saw Rick, you flipped through a map that has.
Yeah.
Colors, and so it's kind of a spread of.
On the backside here.
That would be the amendment.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so all the landowners within BD seven, sub-two, they've got notice, and then also, we don't always do this, but because it's a smaller project, and the engineer's report, the amendments weren't that big, you should all have that report, and amendments receive that with the notice and the major, and that's kind of what we'll be going through, but hopefully you've had a chance to look through that, and if you have any questions on that, um, yeah, I'll, I'll be able to answer, I hope. Uh, so just before I start going through those, I'll just kinda give a rundown of, of what this will be today, so basically, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go through the engineer's report, and the amendment, kinda what, what I'm proposing, um, and then, then after that, basically, we'll go through any objections, which. And then, then after that, basically, we'll go through any objections, which actually already gave one, but if there's, if there's any more, and then I'll have opportunity for any landowners who are on, on this video call or in the board room to provide their input. Um, then we can use those objections to check for remonstrance. And so, basically, how, how these drainage projects work, for those of you may, may or may not know, is a petition comes in, which, which it did, and then, uh, an engineer hired, which was me to do the engineer's report. Um, and then, any landowners within the district can object to the project if they, or they can, they can provide a letter of support as well. But, um, an objection would count for something called remonstrance. So, essentially, if by population, the landowners in the district, more than fifty percent of the landowners object, that also own, that more than seventy percent of the land in the district, then the project is automatically shut down, basically. It's, it's done right there. So, we were just in the hearing at that point, that that remonstrance. If it's not, um, then it goes to the, the board of trustees, which is the board supervisor of Humboldt County. Goes to a vote to them to, for disapprove the, the report. And then, if it's approved, then it would be moving forward towards, um, construction plans and towards a bid, a bid, bid letting. And then the, the project would be put out to bid, um, and then go on from there. So, that's kind of just a little bit about the structure of, of this hearing. And I apologize, I hope everybody can hear me. I apologize for not just being on here virtually. I know it's not ideal, but there was some question of whether this would be postponed or not, and it just seemed prudent to, to make the drive over to Humboldt County unnecessarily. So, I, I hope this works, we'll, we'll do our best. Yeah, let me, let me know if you can hear something or if you have any questions.
Just for the minute, the gentleman who's sitting in here, your name is?
Mike Callen.
Mike?
Mike Callen, yep.
C.A.L.L.?
O.N.
O.N., okay, thank you.
Mike, are you a landowner in the district?
Uh, representing Mary London Trust.
Okay.
Okay, so with all that, protocol in place, um, is there anything you need to tell everyone, Colin, on, you know, that you haven't already, or explanation on the information in front of us here?
Well, I, I think it would be good to just, I'm gonna briefly go through it. Everybody has asked the report and amendment, so I, I hope everybody's read through it. I'm not gonna go into fine, fine detail, but I'm gonna, I would like to just provide a general overview of where the project stands. And then, see what landowner input there is, if people on, uh, on Zoom call or something like that, if you're the board member, or any questions that you support or doubt.
I have copies, engineers report, I guess with the amendment, that was that, if you like.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Colin.
Okay, so BD seven, sub two, the original pile was installed in nineteen, in early nineteen hundred, in nineteen ten. And so, there was a, a main pile and there's several branches and laterals. Um, and it was designed with, uh, what we call a drainage coefficient. It was of a quarter inch per day. And so, what that means is, over the land that is drained, it would have the flow capacity to be able to take off an inch or a quarter inch of excess rain over that entire land area in it per day. And for the time, and this is common with drainage systems that were put in in the early nineteen hundreds, that for that time, in, in carving practices and, and everything at that time, it's maybe fine, but for decades and decades now, that, that is not enough to meet the, the drainage needs of current, current day practice. And to that point, in, in the early nineteen nineties, um, another project was done to put in a relief main pile. And so, what that essentially did, there was a twenty, twenty-four inch, down to a twenty inch pile that was run along the existing, uh, main pile. And that was, and then everything basically north of that relief main that was put in, all drained into that. And then anything from the south still drains into the original main pile. And together, those two, those two trunk mains provide a half inch drainage coefficient. And that's, that's kind of been the modern standard for, since the nineteen fifties, the half inch drainage coefficient, which is what it was originally. Um, there is some, in, in more recent years, there's been projects where we've done higher drainage coefficients than that, but typically, especially if there's some surface runoff, then a half inch drainage coefficient is at. Um, one, one thing I want to mention with that relief main, so it didn't go, it didn't follow the main pile all the way up to the end. It stopped short. And so, that, that's kind of where this project comes in, is the east end of the district, where that relief main stopped short, it's, it's still relying on the whole, whole pile system by itself. With not like a quarter inch drainage coefficient, even though downstream of it, um, that original main pile has a half inch drainage coefficient for the land that is, is drained. That upper end does not, and that, and that's kind of where the, the petition came in. And there's, um, that's where this project is coming from, I guess.
Uh, I, can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the original main that was put in nineteen ten has a quarter. And then the new main that was put in nineteen ninety has a half?
Well.
Or is it joint together that have a half?
Joint together, they have a half.
Okay, that was my question.
Yep, together, so it's, when that new one was put in, we wouldn't do that anymore. But in the nineties, when that relief main was put in, basically, that was a, a cost-saving technique. So, they didn't have to put in a whole new, carry a half inch for the whole system. They're relying on that old pile to, to still drain.
Okay.
Um, the issue is, is that, that's a hundred and ten year old pile now. And they really weren't meant to last that long. I mean, we've, it's been great, but a lot of these district piles have lasted so long and done so well. And maybe they can, for decades, maybe for a few decades longer, I don't know. Sometimes they can continue to have beyond, well beyond their, their life expectancy, which is about fifty years when they were installed. So, for a typical project that, that we do, we don't like to rely on the old pile because it's old and you don't know how much longer it's gonna last. But that's what was done here, and if we're gonna put, if we're gonna improve the drainage upstream where they ended that relief main, we have really no choice but to hook into that hundred and ten year old pile. There was some discussion about hooking it into the relief main because of the newer tile. But Rick was, and what we were talking about there, with those two tiles together, um, provide the half inch drainage coefficient, well, that's relying on which land drains which tile. They're not connected across from one another, one, one another. And so, you can't just be swapping land to drain into one or the other, otherwise you're gonna mess up that balance. And then you won't have a half inch drainage coefficient together anymore. That's, that's kind of where we're at here. Um, yeah, so with the new tile, we would, we would have to hook onto that hundred and ten year old tile. Um, and with the, with the original engineer's report, our plan was to continue on from basically where that relief main ended, run east, and then cross Hawaii Avenue and turn, turn north, perpendicular north, and run, run up the side of that road. There's branch five tile there that basically is underneath the road. And not only is this not providing adequate drainage, but it's hard, if you wanted a tile into it, in the road, so it's, it's hard to get to. Um, subsequently, that, that's part of the amendment, is that just running that tile toward the east side of Hawaii Avenue was, was taken out of the project. And it's just possible that the landowner there might do something their privacy. Um, but basically, what the proposed plan is, simply, and this is in the plan that we're, we're, there's a plan sheet that was included in the amendment. It's an eighteen inch tile that started for about a thousand feet. And then, then if it goes to a fifteen inch tile, and then cross the road, get out of the road right away, and then stop. Um, and one thing to mention is, I think the original pile that was put in was a point zero nine percent grade, which is okay, that's pretty flat. Because we're hooking on to the, the old one, we have to flatten it out a little bit more than that. So, the proposed grade that I have is point zero eight percent. I didn't want to go much, much less than that, make sure there's adequate grade on there. And you, you go and not worry about sedimenting it or anything like that. Um, but we want to make sure that this, if we put a tile in, that it's gonna be lower than any of this existing tile out there. So that any tile that's encountered, you know that, that it can be hooked into the new tile. So, that's kind of the, the reason behind that. Um, and then, okay, yeah, the, with the eighteen, with the eighteen inch, the fifteen inch reinforced concrete light tile, that's about fourteen, fifteen hundred feet of it, and the, the whole project cost with engineering and observation and construction is estimated to be about a hundred thousand dollars for that. So, that's the whole district. It's, it's like seven hundred acres, and then everybody in the district, based on Iowa drainage code, has the right to object. Objection is, and that's the existing schedule that's in place, which one's scheduled to hold. But the lands that are benefited are much less than that, it's about a hundred to five hundred sixty acres. Um, and that's something that needs to be talked about here too, is reclassification. So, we did a preliminary classification for this project. Um, and basically, what that did is, is spread that estimated project cost of a hundred thousand dollars across the land that, that we see as being benefited from the proposed construction of the tile. So, that's not the whole, the whole entire district, which is important, because if you, if you did the project right now and did new reclassification, the whole seven hundred acre district would help share in costs of that. So, without a reclassification, if the project moves forward, that obviously would not be a fair way to, to assess the cost of the project. So, if the project moves forward, we'd recommend a reclassification and, um, for the payment of this project, that preliminary clas, uh, classification work that we did has already fed into that, so it wouldn't be a lot more. Um, and with just the whole district itself, about seven hundred acres, right now it's all on one schedule. When you've got a relief main, it's an existing, um, the, the original main pile that was put in, and you've got like five branches and five laterals that are all just on one schedule. So, if there's any maintenance or if any activities that are done that, that cost money, that's spread across the entire district regardless of whether or not a landowner uses those facilities. So, that's not, it's not a fair way of doing it, and, but that's, that was common when it was first classified, how it was done. It was put on a distinct schedule with technology that we have now and, um, C I S. And to make it equitable, we would break that apart into different maintenance schedules, make that more equitable. And we recommend, whether, whether or not this project moves forward to construction, we recommend a reclassification of the entire BD seven, sub two. Um, and then, I'm looking at, this map here is, uh, in the amendments, and attached to the amendments. And you'll see there, that's got seven hundred fifty-nine acres that we see as benefits on the proposal. And it shows those, the green, the darker the green, the less, the less benefit, basically. So, that, that's how classification of the ton is based on relative benefit. And this is a little bit about how that's determined. There's, there's several factors that we use. One is soil wet. So, of course, you need, you need drainage. Um, and so, the wetter soils might, that have a, a greater need for drainage, have a higher benefit if you provide that drainage. Uh, another thing is how much of the facility do you use? So, if you, if your land is at the bottom end of a long, a long pile, you didn't need all that pile up above you to drain your land. So, you're not using the full facility, so that's usually adjusted down if you're at the bottom end of the system. We call that a used found. Uh, another factor is proximity factor, so how close is your land to the, to the district facility? If you're far away, you gotta do a lot, it's just attached to that. If you're right close by, you receive a greater benefit, you can just hook right in. And then, of course, how much area, how much areas you have that exist, that's. Um, that's kind of the summary of that. I guess that's kind of a, a basic summary of the project. Is there anybody on the board or landowners that have any questions or want to provide any input before we move? And, and I will say, let's wait a little bit to formal objection. And if there's any, I just want to answer any questions that, that may be out there before we go into that, but.
Well, we have the one written.
Written one.
So, anyone, I heard what Colin's saying, is there's a need for any, uh, further clarification before we move, uh, forward?
Peggy, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this is Julie Day. And, um, I was thinking, because of all the paperwork that went out as regarding the reclassification, that the landowners that are in the total district weren't able to object, weren't part of the objection because you're only dealing with the reclassified landowners. Is that true, or? I spoke to a couple of landowners and they would have objected, but they thought since it was gonna be reclassified, they weren't part of the district. Or they weren't part of this project, and so they, their objection wasn't gonna make any difference.
Well, no, so that, that's not correct. And that's the reason why everybody was sent a notice for it, because, and, and that notice that they have the, the right to object. So, and that is a, it's an interesting thing, that, that that's the way the code is set up, is that the existing district is who has the right to object. And this was a preliminary classification, the, the actual reclassification is a separate, is a separate hearing. Um, and by the way, and it has the. Um, um, and by the way, and it has to also be part of a classification commission. So as the engineer, like we, I did this preliminary classification, but the actual reclassification would also have to have two, this interested landowners as part of a commission that together you reclassify, um, the district basically. So that has not happened, but we knew we were sending it out to the entire D D seven subdivision district. And we, we wanted to make it clear, as far as the reason for sending this, that, hey, not the entire district will, would benefit from what we're proposing here. And they should know that before they decide whether or not to object. So this, that's why this preliminary classification shows that dollar you bred over that hundred sixty acres from, it's not the total seven hundred. But no, there's been no official reclassification done. And, but if, if the project moves forward, I would anticipate, I mean, reclassification should be done. And really, yeah, I guess it's up to those individual landowners whether or not they want to object. They're not, they would benefit and they shouldn't have to pay for it. So maybe they really don't have the dog or the bite, that's, that's up to them. But they have to, they have a right to object if, if they want to.
Right now, right now, because to clarify this, hopefully, the fact that it's not been reclassified, that yes, everyone in D D seven subdivision has a vote.
That's correct, yep. And it's based on the existing assessment schedule, so it's like seven hundred point two point one five acres. And it lists all the landowners on there. It was on file with the county and its current assessment schedule, D D seven subdivision. We can't use anything other than one of those to check for remonstrance.
But because everything was sent out with the reclassification numbers, they felt a need and a need to object because they weren't part of it. They weren't, they weren't part of the reclassification thing. So it was our mistake and we'll go with that.
Well, and yeah, I'm trying to think of the right way to put this, but really that's, and that's the correct way of looking at it in a way, is the people outside of this benefited area, although they have the right to object, really, do they need, do they need to even have a part of it? I'm saying is that they feel like they don't. They don't have to because they shouldn't be paying for it and it's not going to really affect them. But, but that's again, that's, that's up to them. They have the right to object and that's what was sent out. That's why they got a notice of this, of this hearing and of their right to, to object.
Well, honestly, don't those people on that, to me, I look at the, at the lower end that has a half inch coefficient right now, but the upper end only has a quarter. Isn't that the way it appears currently?
Yeah.
So now if you correct that and the whole main has a half, that diminishes the people on the lower end's outlet size.
Well, that, so essentially if it's the lower end, the original main tile has a half inch drainage coefficient, so that was big enough.
Okay, based on the whole area.
So if we just up, if we upsized the upper end, it's still gonna, it's gonna match with the lower end.
Okay, alright.
That upper, that upper piece is restricted and the lower, the lower end is not. And so this is just gonna match the drainage coefficient. Yes, because it shouldn't create a problem down the street.
Alright. Is there, uh, any, yeah, has anybody got any questions for Colin, technical questions? I think, uh, it would be fair to hear any thoughts then from the landowners present through the beauty of modern technology. Uh, certainly voice your opinion on, uh, you know, where we're at with information on this project right now.
Do you want me to go or do you want Mike to spare to talk first?
Well, we only have one person here and you're certainly welcome to put your, put your two cents worth in.
Don't have any.
Okay, no comment. So yeah, you, go ahead Julie, if you'd like to say something.
Um, I just wanted to say, and I don't know whether Peggy was able to find it, but back in July when we, um, my husband and I met with David Thompson Markin and Gary Jensen, because he was the one that David was going to hire.
Yep, we have a copy.
She was gonna send, give a copy of the letter that we came up with, the approval for David Thompson to do this project.
Yes, Julie, that was in there.
Yeah, we have that Julie, have you guys a copy?
So that's the only thing I want to say is Hunter Marks wanted to do this privately. And I think that that was how we should do it, how we should continue on. That's my, my two cents, I guess.
Hey, thank you. Does anybody else that's on Zoom have anything? Uh, this would be a good time for commentary.
Yeah, uh, that agreement was not a workable situation with all the details that were in it. And when you go through somebody else's property, it needs to be a county thing, regulated by state rules. And that's where we're at. We did admit, but first we were going to pay for all this, but we could, you could not meet the terms and conditions of the agreement.
What, David, what, what's, uh, not, you know, in that agreement that, that's, that's not workable, I guess? What's, what's missing there?
I am not going to be responsible for anything that happens to a hundred and ten year old tile. Because in, in that agreement, anything that happens out there that goes wrong, that I'm responsible. I'm not going to be responsible for a hundred and ten year old tile. And then also, it needs to be regulated by the state. And then if something goes wrong and then the county comes in and picks it and everybody knows what's going on. And there's nothing in that agreement that says that they could not hook onto it. So, you know, that's where it, uh, it needs to be a county project and that's why we're doing that. I don't like this, this is gonna cost us more than waiting on it privately. But this is the way it needs to be, so it's done right. It's all recorded and everybody knows what, what the rules of the state of Iowa are, correct?
Well, Colin, I have a question for you on that. Uh, that obviously, you guys being in the district have the right to hook onto a county structure, but that doesn't, when you hook onto whichever district, whichever county, uh, district tile, you're not held liable for hooking up to it. Is that, I mean, obviously private tile is private tile that you're responsible for and district tile is district tile.
Right. Yep, and, I mean, when you say when you hook up, if so, first of all, yeah, anybody who is in the district has the right to use the district facilities. There, there, there's shared district facilities that are available for you to use. Um, if you put in something privately, like that's between you, maybe if you have to use a, a green or a neighbor or something, you can do it that way. Um, if it happened to green, the best thing would be to have an agreement on, you know, how you do maintenance and things like that. But here we got, uh, this, this existing district tile and we're gonna replace that district tile essentially with, with new tile that's, that's, that's larger and to meet today's drainage needs. So it would all be under a district facility. Any maintenance on that would be paid by the district, a, a shared agreement that way. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, but it, yeah, I mean, yes, it, yes, pretty well. I mean, understandable of that. You have something there? Well, this doesn't. Okay, you're gonna, currently there's a, what is the old main that is in the, uh, Jensen property? What size is that? It's, they're on tiny, you can't even read it, my cheaters on it.
Yeah, so the, the old main, which is south of the relief main, is, is an eighteen inch. And then at that, at that parcel line, it drops to a fourteen.
Okay, it's a fourteen, okay.
And so we've got it, we're gonna start with an eighteen inch tile and it's gonna be hooked on. Where is that, the old main is an eighteen inch now. And then just continue that eighteen inch up for a thousand feet. And then because the grain left land, first you go east and we can drop to a fifteen inch and then cross the road and then. So we'll just continue that eighteen inch of the old, the old main and then drop to a fifteen.
Okay.
Secondary roads.
Yeah.
I have a question on your detailed estimate, I guess, for the secondary road portion of the crossing.
Okay.
Uh, you spell out the whole fifteen to end to twelve inch.
That was in the whole little way across, right?
Or fifteen. What, what size are we going across the road in just for fifteen?
Fifteen. Any amendments, Ben? I don't know if you have the amendments. But the amendment, there's, there's no twelve, I mean, it shows the twelve inch, but it goes to zero eight. Okay, 'cause I wanted to keep the, the item numbers same from the engineer's report, the amendment. Because when we were gonna do, when we were gonna run it north along the road, on the east side of the road, we were gonna cool, cut back to the west with twelve inch and then put an intake in the ditch. But that, that's all from the project.
Okay.
So there it would be, it would be a fifteen inch crossing the road.
Okay, yeah, that, that was my main question, I guess, what size you're gonna come across the road with.
Yep, the fifteen inch. Any other questions?
So the, the land to the north will still be hooked to the old, the older main, from what I'm seeing. They, they do cross it, two points the way it looks.
Yep, that's, that's, that's the first point, we can talk about that. So the land, the land to the north, well, okay, and the whole like the thousand feet is about where we cross. The existing tile is where it will drop to a fifteen inch, but then.
Will they be a joint there then? I'm assuming they have to because they're probably the same depth.
Yeah, it'll be, the upstream stuff will be hooked in to the new tile and then the, the downstream will be blocked. So this existing main tile there, that's a fourteen inch.
Yep.
That will be basically severed, so that'll be, and the Jensen property there basically would have that tile to themselves.
Gotcha.
There's nothing gonna be coming in from upstream into that and that would be blocked off. And so they have access to be able to use that and it would be a district facility for. But if they, if they wanted to, of course, they can go to the, they'd be able to go to the new eighteen inch tile as well.
So that.
Be better off with that than leave that fourteen inch and have that to themselves, but.
Okay. But now, that is that nineteen ten tile.
Yeah.
If you people go and look at settlement, when they get this in nineteen ninety, you're gonna see there was an objection there to the way that it was done because it stopped in the middle there. It didn't help us, it didn't benefit us people up on the top side at all. And we also objected to why those two tiles were not hooked together. But after Colin explained that, I understand why, because, uh, it wasn't put in on the same grade. So you know what? This is just an improvement that we've talked about for a lot of years and it's just coming to a head right now.
Mm-hmm.
Colin will tell you that it was not done right, did you think?
Yeah, I, I guess we just, we just wouldn't do that where we're relying on, uh, and especially now, more so than nineteen ninety.
That, that's.
Pile is only supposed to last for fifty years to provide any sort of drainage. It's asking for problems down the road. So we wouldn't do it that way, but that's kind of where we're stuck with that. Because there's two tiles there and it's providing a half inch drainage coefficient, assuming that the tile is okay. But they just stopped that relief main short and so that's these hundred sixty acres here still didn't have adequate drainage.
Because really in nineteen ninety, we benefited very, very little from the project that was done. We may have gained a little bit of access of, uh, quicker drainage, but it's not fast drainage at all. There's nowhere for the water to go, the tile's not big enough.
If you were to have a bigger, bigger outlet down, down a ways, it's better. But if your, if your pipe is draining, your land is restricted and that, that becomes the new bottleneck, I guess.
Yep.
Leave the downstream and you soak out bottleneck, that's the upper hundred fifty acres.
Anybody else have anything right now? Uh, I guess speaking for the Board of Trustees, the only concern I have, it's kind of been brought up that we don't have probably every last landowner represented due to maybe not quite being understandable of how this all works. The fact that this is the entire district as it sits today, because it hasn't been reclassified. So, uh, when we look at remonstrance and, and acres and all that kind of stuff, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get an exact handle on that part of it at this point.
Um, so the only thing I would say to that point is that, I mean, yeah, that would be your decision as Board of Trustees for the, for the district on how you want to proceed with that. As far as, like, was the procedures that are in the Iowa code followed? Yes, they were. Everybody in the, the district that's full of seven hundred and twenty two point one five acres, every landowner was given notice and, and, and part of that notice is they were told that they have the right to object to the project. And they felt like it was irrelevant because this project doesn't deal with any of their land. It's their decision. But it's not, it's not because of maybe confusion with that, maybe it is. I, but by the code, the code was followed.
Oh yeah, there, there's no, that's why we're carrying on to the best of our ability with this hearing today because we met all the requirements and, uh, that is not an issue.
I guess that if there was a concern about people not understanding, only, the only thing we could do if, if you wanted to is do just a, send a, a letter clarifying things and then continue the hearing to a different date. I, I guess I, I wouldn't recommend that, um, with, you get the remonstrance. Well, if Hunter Marks don't object to it, even with the steps of the whole district, then remonstrance really can't be met because I, I believe they own more than thirty percent of, of the land in that district.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that.
That makes, makes any difference.
Figu- thanks for that figuring, that, yes. But we're not much for, our board isn't much for kicking stuff down the road. So we'd like to get this situated and finished up today if at all possible. So, really it comes, gets back in the lap of the, of the district trustees then, is one of the houts do, knowing what we know and what we've heard.
Right, right.
Well, I think I have the technical procedure of it.
Yeah.
But we figured it out. Dave never did, a man Dave never did get on, I don't think.
I haven't seen his name on there.
Called in, but Sandy is.
Dave who?
Dave, 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 Dave still, Dave's not here.
He had a doctor's.
Yeah, I didn't know if he'd mentioned, he might try to hook up, but he didn't, I just checking. So it's really gonna come down to the approval of this and as Colin mentioned, the, the approval of this would essentially say the project's moving forward, is that correct?
So I guess there's a couple of motions I would, to vote, but the first one would be to a motion to approve the engineer's report and amend, with amendment number one. And, and then you would vote on that, yes or no, and then depending on what you do there, there'd be other ones that follow, I guess, on how to proceed.
Well, that's my question, on that motion and, and or whatever the vote is, um, uh, if you approve this, does that automatically mean that it's pushing the project forward? That's my question. The thing that's on the agenda is approve, approve the preliminary engineering report.
Well, if that automatically means the project is moving forward. I don't believe so by itself.
I think we can prove the amendment.
To approve, there should be a motion to direct the engineer to um, got it here, to prepare plans and specifications that proceed towards bid letting. That would, that would push the project forward and then even then, it doesn't, it's not a guarantee that the project is gonna go, the board could still, when the bids come in.
Yeah, it's way higher.
High or something way out of whack, you can say, no, we're not doing it for that.
I just wanted the technical clarification for everyone, myself included.
I don't think there's any argument that the um, engineering report is not, not correct, so I would make a motion to approve preliminary engineering report with amendment number one.
I'll second Sandy's motion. Okay, we have a first and a second, is there any further discussion on just the approval of the report presented? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed, okay, report is accepted. Now, do we want to move forward with this, are we gonna not? That's the decision, because as Colin explained, uh, moving forward would be a bid process, which again, is another stopping point, once you get that. But we do have the preliminary numbers in front of us, I like to think they aren't gonna change a whole lot. I mean, he did a real excellent job of putting information together, so I guess the question is, do we, we have a good report? I think we can use that as a guideline, where do we go from here? Well, after sitting and going through all of this, um, and reading, reading this um, contract for drainage for lands of others back from July, I, I'm kinda feeling it needs to be a county project, I, I really do.
Rather than private.
Yeah, that, that's my thoughts, because of, you're basically replacing a county main with a private main. Well, it's, that was one thing I was gonna ask, the, all this engineering report, it's just a new tile. They're not tearing anything out, they're just putting in a new tile. Mm-hmm. And. But this new tile is sized to take care of the old one in case when it goes bad, is that correct, Colin?
We're replacing this, so we're not relying on the old tile.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if the, if the two tiles together equal the half, that'd be different, 'cause then when the old one went bad, you'd be back down to a quarter. But you're actually putting one in that's gonna replace the old one.
That's correct.
Okay, that, that's my thought, why it should be a col- county main. The other information I got though, the old one obviously left in place and everything that's hooked to that would virtually remain hooked to it. Correct. So it essentially is, starting out anyway, is just a tile to outlet the additional drainage. Yeah. It's not, it's, it's there and it's big enough, if the other one failed, you could hook up to it, but for further discussion, nothing old was gonna be hooked up to it at this point. No, but, but it is being put in for future use. It can be, 'cause if it's a district, obviously, as we discussed, anybody in that district has rights to hook on to it. And, and you know, to me, it's, uh, I look at it, you're putting in a new tile, if you put a private one in, you could probably drop it down to a fifteen for the whole project, if you're just draining your own land. Or even smaller, I don't, I don't, Colin, if they were just draining their own land up there, they wouldn't need an eighteen. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, if they were just draining their own land and not letting it, if, if nobody else has the right to hook into it, they wouldn't need a, they wouldn't need any.
No.
No, that's why we. What's your feelings on the benefits?
Well, it, well, it's, this new one is replacing a, the old one's still there, but when it does fail, it's a hu- it's a hundred and six years old.
I understand that.
So five years and now when it starts to fail, do we go in and lay another, another tile in to replace it, or do we do it right now? Is what, the way I'm looking at it.
So Hunter Mark's have met, met the criteria for the land, they have enough land to, to make this thing.
Yeah, it's basically up to the board the way. That's the way I understand, that's why I asked the questions to, and then Colin really succinctly answered it with the remonstrance that there's no reason to kick it down the road, because it wouldn't, uh, if everyone voted no, it wouldn't meet, it wouldn't meet remonstrance on the technical side, but it does really put it down in a very focused acreage situation though. Yeah, yeah. And it does. Go ahead, Sandy.
This tile is actually taking over the old one, is that what you're saying, is though everybody wants to, if they want to, to look up to this new tile?
Yes, and have a, have a half inch coefficient.
Yep, okay, and so how much land is it, just all, I'm trying to, I just looking at the math here, just on the, letting this information.
Hundred and sixty acres.
The Hunter Mark land would be a hundred and fifty?
No, actually, this whole area is a hundred and fifty-nine acres, I think, isn't it?
Hunter Mark.
I, I don't have it, I'm just looking at the playbook, I'm trying to figure it out by the playbook.
Oh, that's right, you don't have this info in front of you, do you, Sandy? Oh, that's too bad, 'cause it, it is a nice, nice presentation.
I'm sorry, I could've, I think I could've attached this stuff to the Zoom call, Sandy, I apologize, I should've asked. Right at the beginning of the meeting, you could've pulled it up on your computer, we were gonna have. But the Hunter Mark of the hundred and sixty acres, I believe, is about a hundred.
Okay.
That's up the vent, of the area that would benefit directly from the new tile.
Okay. How many acres is, uh, so, so two of, uh, how many, how many acres is that?
The whole district?
Uh-huh.
Seven hundred and twenty-two point one five.
Okay. Where's about four of the, the district's down there?
Yeah, the Hunter Mark own, they got like a hundred and one acres out of that, so what would be benefit?
Like one seven, seven. Or lower.
Are we gonna wait and let it go down the road, or are we, I mean, it's, it's coming down fast? This is, Hunter Mark's have a hundred and one acres of it, it's a hundred and fifty-one, it's really not, there isn't too much we can do, correct?
What's that?
For the land, for the landowners.
Right. Not, not remonstrance wise, no, but we have the final say so on any of these projects.
Yeah, then they'll figure out how many acres the, uh, how they're gonna be letting, correct? So if they don't have those benefits, they won't be getting letting as much, correct?
The outlying, if it's reclassified, the outlying areas would be very, virtually nothing. Yeah, the, only a hundred and, what, if they do the reclassification, which we will do if we go ahead with this project, uh, the outlying areas, only a hundred and fifty-nine acres are gonna be assessed. For this whole project? For this whole project, with an average cost of six hundred and.
I'm still learning a lot on this bridge, so I'm asking.
With a, with an average cost of six hundred and twenty-nine dollars an acre, on these hundred and fifty-nine acres, it says. If the bids come in at that appropriate price.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if that's close on the bid.
Mm-hmm.
Well, materials are, I mean, drainage materials blowing up, all the other materials are going up, um.
Yeah, I mean, we, we do a lot of these projects and we get track of what, what's happening price, price wise and I did typically our cost estimate for construction are buffered to be a little bit higher, so that for, for these estimates, to make sure that it ends up being lower than that in the end, we don't want it to be higher. Um, and I did buffer these a little bit more, just because this is a small scale project, there's some efficiency to scale and with a small project, there's a possibility that some of those unit prices could be a little bit higher, I back that into the cost. So I would hope that it would come in lower, lower than what I had.
Would you bid it both ways, concrete and plastic?
We can do that, I, I didn't, I didn't put uh, co- uh, plastic into my cost estimate, but I guess we, I typically wouldn't recommend plastic, because essentially to put it in right, you have to put it in an envelope of crushed rock.
Right.
To protect it, so, and then all plastic will start deflecting, if you want this to last a hundred years, then you might as well just go with concrete. By the time you put a rock envelope around the, the, the plastic tile, you're getting close to the same price anyway, but you could bid it both ways if you wanted it.
Which one lasts longer, that's what you have to look at then?
I would say that the cost, I mean, the reinforced concrete pipe is gonna be the surest bet on that, but there is, this is a little bit different, because you have your, you're looking on at the downstream end, you're gonna be just a hundred and ten year old tile. So if and when that eventually goes bad, then what you do, well, if you put this in, well, I guess any new tile that you put in, you could just hook, hook this into it and it would already be there, you wouldn't have to do it again. Um, that, I guess that would be my, my thought, is let's just do it right now, so that it can last for a hundred years. And if you have to get something down the line with this whole, whole tile, then you're already having this in place, you don't have to mess with it anymore.
Well, the old tile, we just continue that in?
No. No.
The old tile's gonna be there until it fails, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, this is not replacing, we're saying it's adding.
Hundred and ten year old tile this fall had a problem down there, you know how tile shifts in the ground a little bit, well, there was a big suck hole there and they had to fix that this year, but you know what, that's natural, that's gonna happen, the old tile, they just wanna fill it, that's it.
Okay, yep.
It gets great, you just move.
Well, should, will it possibly shift and move more than what plastic would?
No, and the new, the old, the old tile was just butt joint, so there, and there was a little gap in between, well, now the, the reinforced concrete pipe that is used now is tongue and groove or bell and figure, sites where it, it's flipped in to the other pipe and it's not just butt joint. So it, it, there's like a positive connection there and they, they stick together well, you don't have here as much problems in the future with shifting and then having suck holes, like sinkholes where soil gets sucked into the tile, because that joint opened up.
Well. Well, like I said, we have to decide if we want to direct the engineering company to move forward with what we just talked about, or we can say that we don't at this point, and bear in mind, we, cost in that, I do agree with Bruce, I wanna say that upfront, that I would bid it both ways if it came to that. Uh, but I guess that's, that's the next, that's down the road and we still always have the final say so before it ever gets done, but right now, we can, our, our, we need the motion to decide if we do wanna move forward and vote on that. Well, um, after going through all this information, I, I'm kinda under the impression, I think it needs to be a county tile. Uh, coming into this meeting, I probably was thinking the other way, honestly. Um, I wanna make a motion to move ahead with the project and get engineering and uh, get us a report ready for bidding.
I'm sorry, I'm bad.
Okay, we have a first and a second, now any further discussion on that?
I, like you, Rick, I, I kinda was leaning towards the, and I still would like to see it done as a private deal, because I don't know that the majority of the benefits still belongs in one, with one farmer, or with one family, and I guess I hate to see somebody that doesn't want, but by the same token, it's gonna be a, a project that's gonna be there, so I don't feel that makes any sense.
Does.
I would agree with that.
You actually wanna remember, if this was done right in nineteen ninety, everybody, the whole district, and all this. And it's not that right now, and I'm not complaining, it just needs to be fixed now, we need to take care of it, but if it was done right thirty years ago, everybody would pay for it, is that not right, Colin?
Yeah, and I will say this too, so I mean, we're talking about this project and we did a preliminary classification based on relative benefit and there's all these things that factor in, like which lands will benefit how much, and if you see, I believe, I didn't have that added up, but I mean, with that preliminary classification, Hunter Mark, our, this hundred thousand dollar cost estimate, that they're paying for a majority of it. Um, and then with that reclassification, when that actually does happen, there'll be a separate hearing where the relative benefits and who should pay what, that can all be discussed at that time, and making, and in the board, you, you have ability to adjust that, you have the commission. If you, if you believe something needs to be modified from that, you have the ability to do it in separate proceedings, but if you're talking about fair, fair payment and, and benefits, that's, that's none of the reclassification, that's, I, I understand what you're saying. And it could, I mean, this, this could be done privately, um, and it still could, but there's, there's, there's lands here that are gonna benefit replacement of a district tile and, yeah, I guess, I guess it's up to you what you, what you think is the right way to proceed.
Well, that's, that's where we're at right now. So yeah, and it drags the procedural things and drainage, then it gets into the reclassification and that report has to come in front of us to take a look at for the numbers.
Yeah.
And...
Landowners have the same, same type of thing, landowners receive notice and they have a right to object, they have a right to be...
But by then, it's already in the ground.
In a hearing.
Yes, it is.
If their thought.
Ask, ask him if it, is that gonna be prior to this project, reclassification?
That'll already be in the ground then, right, Colin? The tile will already be in, then we just argue over, I don't wanna pay that much, and somebody else is gonna pick it up then.
Yeah, a big piece of the pie we did.
We did the preliminary classification to give you an idea of the, the cost spread, uh, upfront at least, to give them an idea of what they're looking at, adjustments can be made before the final, obviously. But that's why we went and did, did that preliminary classification to come up with the estimate of how the, how the dollars would be spread to this project.
I think we kinda know, but we do have the ability at that to make adjustments as well.
And we, and we have in the panel.
We have.
The Hunter Mark's, um, would need, um, family would need the majority of the rent for, that being about two.
Yeah.
Well, that's why there's so much procedure and drainage, but we're following it, and there is some more discussion that can be made.
And Mike, I mean, oh, were there, Mike, you, you guys are in favor of this project?
No, we have no objection.
No objections at all, okay.
So basically, the only just objection we have was the one that Peggy read earlier, and Daisy.
Yes. And that, we already know of the technicality of the remonstrance, so that's where we have to make the really final decision. So, we have a first and then a second on instructing them to move forward, and we found, is there any further discussion? So I guess at this point, the vote would be to move forward with the, with the project. I'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, moving forward. So...
I don't see anything in any of the motions about ordering a reclassification, is that...
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that, if we're moving forward, I'd recommend that make a motion to direct the engineer to prepare the reclassification for improvement project.
Uh, could you say that one more time?
Well, I can just beg it simple, just direct the engineer to proceed with reclassification.
Alright, I'll make a motion to direct the engineer to proceed with reclassification.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Reclassification as well. Do we have anything else on this, Colin, that we need to do today for your benefit and information?
Um, but, and I don't think you need to do this today, but, uh, there's a couple other, uh, housekeeping items that you'll need to do, maybe it would just make sense to do it today, but that, that the interest rate in the, some of the years for installation payment, like if we do five percent interest in ten years or twenty years, we could set that. And the other thing is, uh, and maybe you don't have anybody in mind, but that classification commission you'll need to appoint.
We should have somebody.
Two other commissioners or landowners in the county that don't have own land in this district.
Correct. I think we still have those.
Yeah, we do. Uh, I think we're gonna wait till our, our, uh, drainage clerk is available. Uh, she's out today. That's my thoughts, cause I, I know we have, we're trying to get some new commissioners found.
Okay.
Make sure they have the right commissioners.
Yeah.
Chris asked the question, how will they handle the old tile? Can, can it be that those on the old tile will be connected with the new one?
Once it's installed and it's a district, they have every right to look up and do it.
That's what I would assume.
Yep, that's her decision.
And I, I do wanna say a couple things about that, it was talked about a little before, so when a new tile's put in, they're probably gonna run into old private tile, and anything they get, they're gonna hook directly into the new tile.
Yeah.
Um, and then...
So the old, the old one on the north side will just drain the north, is what I'm understanding.
Well, it'll be a stretch of a thousand feet there, that's just a standalone fourteen inch pipe, and it'll drain into the, it'll, it'll, right where we're connecting on, it'll hook in back into the old main pile. So that, that'll continue to serve the denton planer. Um, and then where it hooks into again, it's gonna block the downstream, but it's just a standalone fourteen inch pipe that would, that we would basically say that the district abandoned that as a facility to come to private tile. And then they would do maintenance on it in the future. Um, but if it did ever...
I, I'd object to that.
I would too.
Yeah. I, I think it still should be, uh, the county main and be supported by all landowners. Otherwise, they need to hook them up to that new main.
Okay. We can do it that way.
Yep, I think we need to keep it as a county until it does start to fail, and then we'll pay the, the district will pay to connect the, yeah, connect it to the new main.
Agreed. And as far as this other technicality itself, and we're running out of time on our Zoom meeting in general, I think we can wait on that. Uh, we, would it be who of us to set a reclassification hearing date?
Um, I would not recommend doing that at this time.
Okay.
Typically, we do that after the construction.
Yeah.
To make sure if something could change, this is a preliminary plan, we're still gonna have to dig up the old tile and confirm elevation, this, the alignment could change. It should have changed much, but, and, and if you wanna get the final project cost in this further reclassification, well, I would, I would allow for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else for everybody involved in Colin? Cause yeah, we don't wanna run out of time to finish up our meeting here. Well?
Just wanted to...
Go ahead, Peggy.
Just wanted to comment, anybody that wants any of the, the amendment, um, let me know, I can mail them out to you. Um, I didn't get this till just early this morning, didn't have time to make copies and send it out to you guys. So if you want a copy, let me know.
Colin, is there anything on the preliminary games that we can do this fall? If you bid this, whether it's out next spring here, or is that something that's gonna take some time or what?
Well, we would, we would bid it, and part of the bid would be, uh, a bid I would call it a mandatory explanation. So the contractors that get the project, we have, the first thing we have to do is go in there and do these locations. And then we can shoot elevation to location, if we have to make any minor adjustments. Maybe we can make those in the field, maybe we have to come and throw the cad, and then, and then make, make adjustments and then go open, but we just... If on the bid, I think probably it most likely will be in two weeks that we would have those plans and specifications ready. Um, and then we can put them out for bid, and probably be like a three, three weeks. You wanna have it out for bid for potential contractors to look at it, and then have bid letting after that. So with that, we're looking probably into early January for bid letting. But, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna take any, any more of your time, if there's, if there's no other questions, I guess. Thanks, thank you everyone for going along with this, of course, I know it's a, a challenge doing this all virtually, but I, I appreciate it.
We had to go through all the...
Yeah, no, well, we could have pushed it off, I found out it did have some dissent. But we, we got it accomplished, thank you everybody, thank you Colin. We better move on before our Zoom meeting time expires.
We're done Zooming, before we bank you.
Yeah, what's that?
Before we're done Zooming.
Before we're done Zooming, exactly. Thank you. Uh, this is, just, we aren't gonna be able to act on this today, but I'm gonna...
In drainage still, or?
Yeah, we're still in drainage, and I'm just gonna mention the drainage. Don't mention it, I, we'll put this on the agenda for next week, this is a, just a technicality, but it, we'll need to approve this agreement. It's maintenance, um, I mean, sixty-two with the private landowner, uh, group, uh, for just a small portion of, uh, the ditch cleanup.
Oh, that's a...
For that aggraw, but they have the same outlet as the drainage district. And this was like the final piece of the project. And this has all been drawn up, and they're working on the signatures with the landowner. And we will put this on next week's agenda for formal approval from us, yeah, party.
And then it can be recorded.
Yep, and it's all, yep, so, but it didn't, I just got it very end of last week, so. That's pretty just a technicality on that project. Anything else on drainage otherwise?
Oh.
Most of them go out of drainage.
No, second, but we'll have to wait for Peggy to come in before we move on, she stepped out.
Okay, but we can go out of drainage, true.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, we are out of drainage. Yeah, I'll just get this on, this'll take two minutes, next week.
Did you get, nothing broke, bad string?
Yeah, I see that.
Water on the chain. It's a good thing it isn't broke. We're out of...
Bruce, motion to go out of drainage, and I second it.
I'd like just some more time on this, we need...
Oh, okay, we'll try to wrap it up real quickly, so we're done with...
I just accepted, do I need to do anything else other than just accept it?
I'll make sure at ten thirty when that hits, that I, you're not in the waiting room, I'll make sure that you get on.
That's it.
Ben, can you hear us now?
Yep, I can hear it.
Okay.
Yeah, Ben, thank you for your patience, go ahead with your agenda items.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, first thing that I've got on the agenda is an application to work in the county right away for Brad Town Crossing for Dick Walter, uh, contractor Scott Mansky. This would be on, and Nellman Avenue, just north of one hundred and seventieth street. Extension's two and three to Avery County. Uh, I tried calling Eric one day, and I ended up getting ahold of Rick. Uh, Scott actually completed this work on Thursday. I don't know the weather, it's still a bit, it's a little...
So it's done?
Yeah, I do believe it's done, right?
Yeah, it's done, project.
I talked with Ben, and he said, he said everything is in order, and, uh, with the nice weather we're having.
Perfect.
I, I said, go ahead and get it done, you're happy with it, we're happy.
I make a motion to accept it as approved, right, working right away for Walter and Scott Mansky for that tile crossing.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Okay, we're still working on the approval denied, ten driveway extension requests.
Yeah, so, uh, that's a best print, uh, on mine, uh, should be approved, I have four driveway extension requests. These are the last of the ones that, uh, Gary Davis come in and requested. We are still waiting on, uh, property owner's signature on these. Rod ended up signing permits. But what we've done in the past, basically, if the property owner calls in, talks today, tells them that it's okay that the driveways are widened, um, you allow them to use.
And then at that time, you discuss who's making the payment, whether it's the operator or the owner?
Right, which this is owner constructed, so...
Oh, okay.
Right, well, it's like, I called it over to the landlord or something, all that's came back.
Yeah.
So we can approve it pending their signatures?
Yeah, that's what I was talking, that, uh, they're approval, whether that's verbal or written.
Okay.
I'd make that motion to approve the driveway extension for the ones in question with the, either the call in or the, uh, writing from the landowner. Is that covered yet?
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed, approved. Now, you have some information, you're on a pickup, it looks like.
Yeah, so, these down quotes to Humble Motors, North Dial for a pickup truck for the boat shop location. These quotes, back, both of them, I believe I attached copies of the quotes, you guys? Do you have them?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Uh, the low quote was Humble Motors for a twenty twenty-one Chevy Silverado, twenty-five hundred HD. Uh, price minus trade-in is thirty-five thousand, thirty dollars. Uh, with the, wait, anticipated delivery date of first of March.
Okay, did you, uh, visit with North One Auto about the state pricing? Cause obviously, they must not have taken that into consideration, or?
They must not have taken that into consideration, I have to have a conversation with, uh...
Preston.
Explain to him the, the statement on these projects.
Would you like to have that conversation and bring this up next week, or are you happy with this price?
I'm happy with this price.
Okay. Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, bid from Humble Motor Sales for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-five hundred HD Chevy.
Any further discussion on that? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Posed, approved. Now, discussion on the Murray Bridge project?
Uh, back to the, it was that, I did also send you guys a copy of the, uh, these dates regarding to the royalties tax money.
Yep.
Tracking to the COVID, what was initially estimated as a potential loss in royalties tax money, though twenty-five, uh, twenty-five percent has been less significant since, um, the last report that they came out with said somewhere around eight percent. They've come back and readjusted those numbers again, and now they're looking at three to four percent. Which I always factor, what they dollars are, our dollar amounts are, I always reduce it by three to four percent on what I think we're actually pulling in. So in other words, the money that I've budgeted this year is indeed what I'm hoping to see. So I guess with that, uh, in the coming month or so, uh, we'd like to start looking at some of the other that next, that we've had questioned this year. That would be an excavator, possibly a semi-trucking trailer to move it around. I think I can hold up on the, the motor for Hardy, for the time being, their turnaround for those was relatively short. But I would like to start gathering information from our suppliers for our vehicle.
I'd say, yeah, go ahead and gather up your information. I, I think we're gonna have to look at our budget for next year, cause I am concerned about the future here. I know this year it hasn't impacted us a whole lot yet, but I think it's going to. Maybe not, maybe I'm pessimistic. Maybe not, maybe I'm pessimistic.
I'm guessing you're right.
Yes, we just don't know right now.
Yeah, there's just a lot unknown.
If government shut down again, these numbers would change.
Right. But it, go ahead and gather up your info and then we can look at it when you get to.
Okay. Uh, the next item that we do have on the agenda is to have a discussion on Hardy Bridge. Uh, last evening, I spoke with Dr. Ripson because our bricks inspections. How, uh, steps proceeding with this and getting our state historic preservation licenses and our national environmental protections licenses. And one of the things that they suggested them did was a alignment study. Which basically looked at two or three different alignments for this potential project. One of them being straight north shot, that was on, on Elm Avenue. The other alignment that I proposed to them would be giving the bridge on its current location and building through roadway on the east side of the river, popping up like a people's house. I guess what, what they're proposing is doing this alignment, usability study to show potential, uh, environmental impact on either route. Something that the DOD wants to see. They're supposed to be able to what some of the risks is caused. Uh, I'm, I'm guessing this is gonna be a couple thousand.
Yeah.
But I'm still waiting for a response from them on that.
Okay.
Uh, I have not heard back. And last night new, there were eleven candidates and eight spots open for bridge funding. Which means our odds are pretty decent. And that's getting it this year or next year. So I look at the money that we're spending for these types of inspections and researches is gonna pay, pay off either this year by grand or next year.
Well, I think you're doing a good job pursuing this option and, um, it's something that, like you say, it's a large drive around and it was something we can't afford to do on our own.
Having anything on the study? We're gonna have to have it done sooner or later, isn't it? So it's money that you're gonna have to spend now or however?
And I'm sure the state wants to make sure you're just not taking a route that's, you know, nice or isn't the cheapest or the most advantageous for some frog or turtle or fish.
Yeah. So, uh, Elm Avenue is definitely not the east route. What I, I think is, it'll be nice as well.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's rich, either on the, what I call the west route or the east route. If that official.
Right, yeah.
Also to catch you guys up, I guess, on, on official things, we could have a wooden box over there on one hundred and twentieth street between Delaware and Nell. It's between Louis Jacobson's and a hog setup. They're home, but they were here probably three days ago. And we got a bar, lower one end, they don't come to a section of it. I've ordered a place to pipe to tear the wood梁and box out and place. But as soon as I get the pipe here, it's December seventh, so most ground is in rows. I'm gonna try and tear that out.
How big of a pipe are you putting in?
Pipe, I'm gonna tear, I'm gonna be like-
Okay.
Probably a grand, most of the pipe.
Okay.
Is there a tin? Ben, can you tear that out and then just wait for the pipe? Or do we have to leave it in there or?
And then cover it with rock or something, or?
Well, what I'm, what I'm hoping is if the pipe's gonna show up on, I think it's Monday, December seventh, uh, Friday, I'd like to tear everything out, get it dirty. Or when the pipe shows up, basically, I'm gonna put it up on the grid.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea.
So is the road closed because of that then, or?
What's that?
Is your road closed because of that then?
Right now, we've just got barricades. They're off the one side and still, still passing.
Aye.
Barricade with lights.
Might just keep an eye on the weather then. And it looks like, I mean, it might get cold enough in a couple of days before that you're gonna tear it out. If it's gonna get that cold, it might not hurt to tear it out a day or two early.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I hope. Uh, I have not heard anything. Peggy, have you gotten a, a request for hearing?
For what?
What hearing?
Up on-
For, for this hefty tile, this Friday.
Oh.
No.
We got a copy of, uh, from insurance from Eastern Ag, contractor that's like right pile portion of it, I guess. But, yeah, I, I haven't heard anything if they had a hearing scheduled or anything. That's for sure.
Okay.
Anything else, Ben?
That's all that I have.
Okay, I will, uh, get your stuff together that I need to sign. I'll stop on my way home.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, till I get that, done that, done that, done. Oh, uh, we have the Elder Bridge Agency on Aging Funding Request in front of us.
They had requested ahead of time to send this to you, whether you wanted them in person or to send it this way. And since we have the last couple of times done it this way, I told her it'd be okay to just send it to us?
Yep.
Well, as normal, when we get our request, we take it into consideration when we're starting in a couple of weeks. Right?
Yeah.
So it probably looks like about the same amount? Peggy, did you ever check?
Um-
This number versus what?
I did not, no.
Okay, I guess we can get to that.
Yeah.
Anything else on the funding request from Elder Bridge? Okay. So, we will take that under advisement and, uh, move along to further discussion on mask requirements at county facilities.
Dave Lee asked me to get a copy of what Green County did as far as masking for Derek Kelly. There's one for Donovan when he has a minute. Um, I'm not sure exactly what Dave's thoughts were, but he asked to have a copy of it for today's meeting, so.
Well, my question is, I, and I glanced at Fort Dodge paper on my way out the door this morning. Um, I saw on the front page that the city of Fort Dodge is considering a mask mandate. Well, didn't the ma, or the governor already mandate masks or?
In all public buildings.
So what is it, what is, what is it we're after? I guess, what is it they're after? If the governor already mandated that you should wear a mask, isn't that kind of overkill?
I think so. I don't know, I happen to-
The governor made the mandate, so if it's a mandate, then Humble County should be following that in our courthouse also.
I think we are, aren't we?
Uh, currently, what's our sign on door requested?
The sign says it's strongly suggested.
So we probably should chan, change it to the governor mandates it in all public buildings in the courthouse.
If that's what you want me to do.
I mean-
But, I, I don't think we have any choice.
I don't either.
I've heard the discussion on what you just mentioned. And it did, it is a public building.
Yeah.
I just also-
The governor's mandate, she just said employees also, correct?
I believe so.
I believe so.
She said employees and visitors.
Well, I also noticed that, uh, the updated sign is basically all the offices are closed minus the treasurer. And that's all we discussed a week or so ago.
Um, court may be open and Edno and those upstairs, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just noticed the ones that-
But on first floor.
Yeah. So, if so, that's, do you want a motion on that, that we're following the governor's protocol?
If you're, yeah, gonna change it from what we had before.
I would make-
Is that a motion that we're going to follow the governor's protocol?
I'm sorry, Sandy, there was a noise in here. Could you say that a little louder?
I'm sorry. I will make the motion that Humble County will be following the governor's protocol.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Alls? There we go.
Oh, okay. Dave Lee's on the phone, he wants to tell us now.
Now, Rick, wanna hang up on him?
Is this-
I'm trying, just push the button.
Because I can't hear anything anymore.
Dave, are you there?
She said at ten thirty.
Okay.
Did you leave there after ten thirty?
I, yeah, ten thirty I came back up. Well, Sandy's still on.
I know.
I'm not.
I'm on.
I know, uh, it's maybe that's-
Your, your computer's on. I know, but I don't hear a thing though.
Oh, you don't hear any?
Uh-uh.
So you're on fire?
Huh.
Well-
Oh.
Yeah, you're in, you're on twice with us.
I know. I don't know why I'm on there twice.
Dave?
Well, probably your second meeting I set up.
We, uh, approved, uh, following the state recommendation, governor's proclamation of a mask in all public buildings. So, we're a public building, so it's gonna be restated that we, people coming in to and working in the courthouse wear a mask.
Okay.
Thank you for the information that you provided us. No, thank you. So that's what we did. Not carry. Uh, any further discussion on mask requirement? Or does that pretty well cover what's up today?
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. What did you, what did you?
Good lord, man, if you can't hear me, then you're down. We, we followed the state slash governor's protocol that all public buildings, you will wear masks when you're in the building. And that people that work in the building will wear the mask as well.
Okay, well-
You didn't change anything else on your door shut?
When you get up and leave your desk, you put the mask on.
Okay, but at your desk, you're okay?
Yeah.
If you're six feet apart.
Okay.
And we didn't change any of the other previous discussion. If you say appointment only to come into the supervisor's office, that's fine.
Okay.
Just that we basically-
You're never let down since sixteen apart.
Yeah.
Right.
You need to be wearing your mask, otherwise you're possible inspection of-
Right.
Okay.
So we just basically only changed the sign on the door to say masks are required.
Okay.
We need to possibly look into, isn't it like there's a thing, how long your duration is? You might need to find out that specific, is it duration thing also? About how long we're in the same room with each other? I think there's something about that too. I might just want to-
Well, isn't her mandate for another week?
I actually, yeah, I actually gotta come out with another story.
For, for December, I think, is when she's going to, after she reviews the numbers according to the, the way I read it or heard it. And I'm sure we'll just follow along, because everybody else did.
It's, it's stated, public building, we're a public building, so we're just gonna go with that. Question on, we've talked about this, but generally speaking, and I guess I can ask Linda too, that when you're working here, the vast majority of people are wearing masks.
Oh, yeah.
So, this isn't-
Where?
This isn't something that, we're just changing it to required instead of strongly suggested for the couple per, couple percent that maybe aren't, they, they need to. So that's really all we've done.
We aren't gonna bring a deputy up here?
No, no. But, but at the same token, that's why I asked Peggy, the vast majority of people come in and have their mask on.
The few that we've had come in the office from the general public have had masks on. I haven't had to ask anybody.
I, I don't think we'll have to call law enforcement on that. Should be good. Any other discussion on that? We have the claims approved. We will go down to committee reports.
Um, I don't, we haven't had any committee reports this week.
I had one on Monday, um, the Edno meeting, and then I left here and went out on the phone. Um, I don't think that I had, now the ministerial board canceled, so I didn't have that. So I had.
Okay, uh, the seven eighteen, I think we had, um, eight years in meetings. And then West City, we had our C F S annual, um, meeting by a student hospital. And that was just where, um, for, where the dollars were spent. And, um, providers, David Moss, uh, people that were going to do that for, um, one month. And it's on some very, very good stuff. So I guess-
Dave, are you still with us?
Yep. Uh, West City eighteen, uh, we do find hash mat room meeting. Also, uh, I'm, uh, having development, uh, near at three o'clock at the city hall. Uh, insertion, uh, we discussed, I think, a couple of houses, so they come out with, uh, 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 Thursday, I had a third watershed meeting and that was all through.
Okay, I didn't have any official scheduled meetings and I guess I could have brought themself in drainage. But, um, on DD five and DD eighteen ditch cleanout is progressing well with the hopeful completion of the ditch cleaning end of this week, first of next. Kind of both of them, the way it looks. So I've been really pushing them to get done because obviously we don't trust the weather this time of year. But they've been doing a excellent job and, uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, checking on it and they've made, I know Peterson's on eighteen, have made some changes using both excavators and just expedite it to get, to get that main ditch, get that main ditch done this, this year, while the weather's still digable. And Brandon Meyer on DD five saying, uh, they're nearing the finish line, aren't there? But, you know, I say end of the week, you know, pretty, if they aren't there by the end of the week, it's dangerously close. So that's the update on the ditch cleaning progress.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody else have anything else? Peggy?
Uh, Eric?
Yep.
Uh, I got a call from Ian Sandin, uh, he would like to get the clean out on the, uh, anyone there that we got here a couple of years ago or was that there? So we can save some of the, uh, interest charges out, if you'd like to pay it out. If we can get the floor straighter out, I saw it lost it. And that interest out itself, we're trying to give six percent, basically for that.
Okay. Which one was that on, Dave?
Um, I don't remember which one it was, it was over there before. I don't remember that, I didn't have it on the-
I know we cleaned a spur, spur of num, of that ditch. I'm trying to get what number that ditch is. I think it's three. We did have a spur cleaned. I wonder if that's what he's referring to?
Yeah. And I was through this property over there and, uh, uh, south, it's one we come out, uh, west of, I think, I'm going, up across the highway.
Oh, that one up there? Where we had some water problems with it washing by the road and stuff?
Right.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to get the ground straight on that, you're getting, so you can, so you- It's actually, it's a very straight on that, you're getting it, so you can take it through across that.
That hasn't been levied?
Well, I don't know, it's still wires on it. Well, I checked into everybody all week.
Say, Ben, are you still on, on the, the meeting?
No.
He's there.
Yeah, I'm still here.
I think they, this one here is that work over there, they did, uh, by Terry Littles' place. I think that's, is that possibly what he's thinking of? I don't know.
It was years ago.
Uh, Xenia, was it? Yeah, it wasn't actually on Terry's place, but that's kind of that area where he lives. But didn't we do some work along the road there?
Yeah, yeah, we did. Uh, that was, uh, he's talking about the main, where I think, uh, where he explained to me. It's the main that we put it, uh, from over there by Texas, uh, the bridge gets there and coming up.
Oh, oh, you're putting.
I can't see, uh, Texas over there, where he heads back across the Asian Mall.
Yeah, that one. Okay, you're talking that, that, the big tile main that we put in, not an, not an open ditch.
Right.
Oh.
Right.
Yeah.
That's been levied, I know it has.
Well, I thought it would be, but, uh, he was saying he just got some.
Will he touch base with Trish?
We'll check.
The tree left, yeah, just keep that information, Dave, and, you know, when you get back up and around, you might want even just double check on that, what he's, what he's after. Is it just, and there wouldn't be much, any maintenance on that.
Well, oh, I know what it is. I, I know what it is, Dave. They're on the gravel road about a year ago. We had a big suck hole. And, and I think Peterson from Badger fixed it for us. So we had the, you know, Mid-American was out there holding the pole up for a while, for a few days and. That's, that's the one, that was last summer.
Yeah, but still.
It was a repair, so that's.
Yeah, we started digging and we found seven tile all dumping into the same.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's probably what Give is talking about because they found right there.
Yes.
Yeah, it could be.
Okay. Well.
I'll check it out a little bit, but I, I had that.
Okay.
When Trish gets back in here, we can visit with her on that.
Okay.
Excellent. Thanks, thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Anything else?
I make motion to adjourn if we are done.
I will second Bruce's motion to adjourn.
All right. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.